Yeah. All right. Are we ready, ready? I'm ready. Okay. The City of Marine City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, February 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Klassen.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler. Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Vicammon.
Here.
City Manager Dateman.
Here.
And Commissioner Kreidler is out?
Commissioner Kreidler is absent.
Right. He's out of state, right? Different time zone, so he can't call in?
Correct.
Do we need to make a motion to excuse him?
I'll make a motion. We excuse Commissioner Kreidler.
Support?
We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen.
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vicammon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Approve the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support?
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah. One question. Could we move in the consent agenda, 7C, that agreement? And can we move that to 11A? Because I have some questions on it.
Yes.
Are you making a motion to do that?
I will amend my motion to approve the, the...
Consent agenda.
Nope.
The agenda.
No. To approve the agenda, moving item 7C to 11A.
Thank you.
Support again.
So we have a motion and support. Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. The Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Go ahead.
Phil Pluckcheck, 546, Shartier. I read the Code of Ethics and the Code of Conduct. It's kind of balanced. There's some good things in there, but I did have some questions on some of the stuff that's in there. On the Code of Conduct, one thing is, it seems to give more power to the mayor to decide what action to take. I could see where this could open up for one or more person's bias to go after people they don't like, or many people complained to the one individual about necessarily one person, kind of a gang-up attack style. I just see there's potential for that. I want to know if that can be addressed in there some way. You talk about what offends people. Is there any real clear definition of offensive? I mean, obviously, if you're sitting there and name-calling somebody, that's one thing, but there's so many contexts for things that one thing may offend someone, but may not necessarily offend someone else. I think there should be more guidance on what actually would be considered offensive, which I know that's like asking the Supreme Court to find obscene. The mayor being the official spokesperson for the city should not mean other commissioners can't talk to the media unless they state a personal or a city view. They are elected officials. If they want to talk to their, talk to the media, that should be their position to do so as well. Only giving people and appellants three to five minutes at a public hearing. Why can the mayor interrupt a speaker? Defined presentation. Are we upset about how heavily Commissioner Hendrick's attorney took the floor and defended her? I don't know if it's spurring off that because it was, you know, kind of ran there, which is fine, but defined public hearing seems to be used interchangeably. We're talking about public comment. We're talking about public hearing. Are we talking about town halls? I mean, some more definition than that. Everything seems to be under public hearing. What is a true public hearing versus public comment or some other form of public? The mayor should not be counseling behavior of board members. Others may feel inappropriate. That kind of leads into the first one where a bunch of people can complain to the one individual and then leaving it to the mayor to make that decision. It kind of opens it up for the bias to get in there. So I would say this is why we have a commission. I think the commission as a whole should address it. Under commission members' behavior and conduct, it leaves it up to the mayor to initiate action against a member. Once again, this is why we have a commission. I think too much power is actually given to our mayor in this Code of Conduct. I think that power needs to be reduced greatly. On the retention policy, I read that through. It's good the city's trying to put something together, but a couple of things I want to point out. Make sure you follow the state guidelines as well. If you look at the state's retention policy, it breaks it down by the offices of the government in your local government, whatever it may be their retention policy is for, and it actually gives the guidelines of how long to save certain documents for that particular office. A good example is the city manager's office. The city manager in that state guideline is supposed to save all correspondence for two years. When you look at the definition of correspondence, it refers to, and this is taken from U.S. legal, correspondence refers to communication with exchange of letters. It also means the letters written or received, the letters written by one to another, and the answers there, too, make what is called the correspondence of the parties. So in general, any correspondence is any communication between two people, you know, letter-wise, and that would include email as well, because that's a form of letter. I would think it definitely would include that. Number two, if a FOIA is put forth for emails, will the whole account be searched? It says in that policy that commissioners, elected officials, should organize their email accounts so stuff can be readily accessible, you know, to see what's in there and view it. Well, when I FOIA'd the mayor's emails, I was told that they just went through the inbox and they went through the outbox. They didn't look at deleted things. They didn't look at, you know, subfolder. It was inbox and outbox. If one person moves everything to different folders in their entire email account, and if it's not in the inbox anymore, if someone puts a FOIA request in, is it going to come back as absolutely nothing found because they only searched two places? Will the whole email account actually be searched? This commission should, the city should actually consider a backup system because what one person beams transitory or may have to keep or not keep could vary from person to person because you're getting into what the person feels meets the requirements and what doesn't, and different people feel different things on that. I mean, some things are more obvious than others, and some things can be gray areas. So why not have a kind of a middleman server that captures all the email going through? So if a FOIA request is ever turned in, everything, everything is there, and that server is then searched by email address, date, range, everything else. So at that point, it doesn't really matter where someone puts it in their inbox. It doesn't matter if they delete it. You go to the middleman server that captures everything going through it, and then everything will be returned to the individual that made the FOIA request. And that, if someone does delete something, that, oh, I shouldn't have deleted that. Oh, no. You know, am I in trouble? Well, no, it's okay. Next time, remember that this falls under these guidelines, but we do have it on this backup server, so you're fine. That's all I wanted to say on those two items, but it's good the city's moving forward on retention policy. Some of the stuff in the Code of Conduct, Code of Ethics, I think is really good, but those are a few things, issues I wanted to point out with them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? Go ahead.
I don't think I have enough for everybody, but this is just something I just want to share. Maybe the attorney could give one, some of the commissioners.
All right. What I gave, handed, what I handed you, all right, Rosely Squires, 211 Michigan, Mariners Landing Condos. I've been a resident of the condos now almost 28 years. All right. I've had a problem for a long time, and it's only escalated and escalated and escalated with a dog next door. Dog and sometimes dogs next door to me. I don't, I think it's an extremely legitimate complaint to want a dog on a leash, for a dog not to bark all the time, and for there not to be excrement, dog's waste, along my driveway. I'm just in a condo. When I back up, I get out of the car for any reason or pack up my car for any reason, there's excrement along my driveway. Sometimes there'll be as many as 12 piles. And I keep getting, I feel like I'm on a teeter totter because you can tell by this letter that's written by our management company, the condo management company says, call the police. The police say, that's private property. We don't have any dealings in there. You know, I don't know. I don't know the law. Maybe the lawyer could help everyone with that. According to that letter, the management company seems that it lies within the police department, that there's laws in place. I'm not asking for a lot here. I mean, I've got so many pictures in my phone of piles of poop to prove this, that I've got way more piles of pictures of poop than I do people, and that's pretty insane. Now, this has been going on for years, and it's escalated and escalated and escalated. I mean, it's embarrassing to me when my friends come over and take me to go somewhere and they, you know, maybe get out to tell me they're there or get out to bring something to me, and there's poop all over the front yard, and it's right up against my driveway. I don't think, you know, I know one neighbor says, well, just ignore it. It smells. Today, it was warm in the morning. It smells. It's raining on it. It gets soft and, you know, divides. It is just very, very, very gross. And if it is the police's responsibility and if it is the city's responsibility, then I would just hope that they would take the responsibility and solve this problem. Or, and if it is only the responsibility of the condo association, which lawyers I've talked to do not agree with that, I just believe I need a service in this area. I think my complaint's really legitimate, and I do not think I have to keep living with this. Thank you so much, and I hope you will address this.
Anyone else? Public comment? Okay. Moving on. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of January 20th, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
I just had a question on it.
Yep. Go ahead.
In relation to the Union Street parking side, was that ever addressed? Did it get back with you?
Yeah.
We're good.
Chris today, she wasn't in, so I was on my event for first.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, you know, we could, anyway.
Which side?
It's how it was drafted.
Okay. The draft was correct. Yeah. Okay. Just so that we can notify people and they're aware.
Okay.
Thank you. That was all.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session, meeting minutes of January 20th, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, the consent agenda. We have several things. One is the departmental activity reports, the Marine City Area Fire Authority run report. We're moving down to D, which is the Historical Commission meeting minutes of October 19th, 2021, Pension Board meeting minutes of October 26th, 2021, the Retiree Healthcare Plan meeting minutes of October 26th, '21, Community and Economic Development meeting minutes of December 8th, '21, communication from the Historical Commission, and the special event about the twinkling forest. That is an idea that is, is coming up, and we, we're doing it early, obviously, so that we have all year to plan for the twinkling forest, which is going to be by the ice rink next Christmas, right? Next?
November.
November, December?
This coming Christmas.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with moving 7C to 11A?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda letters A through I, excepting item C.
Support.
Motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vicammon.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Financial business. Can I have a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $687,992.86?
I make a motion. We approve expenditures, including payroll, for $687,992.86.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions?
I have one question. On the section that's one of 39, page 36, I see we finally have one bill in here from UHY for $13,725. Is that just for the month or is that for a certain period? Do we have any prior to that or?
We, there was one that you did for November when they first started.
Yeah.
So you've had one for November, one for December, and we did just get January's in.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question on the audit. It had billed 48, 447, 96. This would be McBride Manley. And based on the minutes, they had mentioned that they were only going to bill for 54, so it's less, which is good. I just wanted to make sure that, are we going to see a little bit more in another?
That's where he landed.
That's where he landed. Great. So that's.
That's what I understand.
Second question. Sorry.
Not with him today? That seems to be where he landed.
Excellent. Second question was on the Christopher Reeve grant invoices. There was something for a reflective winter jacket I just am curious about. Maybe it was for the fishing pole holder?
That's the fishing pole holders.
Okay. So the jacket maybe is just something.
Something ordered with those.
Got it. Okay. All in all, I think it's really neat that we're, you know, sprucing up that area and that it would be available for, you know, to be ADA accessible and have all that stuff. So, anyway, I don't think it was actually a winter jacket. I think it was like a sleeve that the fishing pole holder goes in or something. Okay. Cool. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All set.
Anyone else? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vicammon.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Continuing on with financial business, we have the preliminary financial statements. I just need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
I'm just glad to see that the whole thing is being printed out now. The last ones we were getting, we couldn't find out where they were going because they were cut off.
And that, I had made the point that UHY was waiting until they got through the end of December to reconcile before they wanted to give you some of those reports so that they knew those numbers were correct. That's why you're seeing extra in this month. This is to bring you up to speed. Commissioner Hendrick had asked that she had seen some of the back information. That's why you see so much now, that gets you through the end of the year, and now we're moving forward from January.
Yeah. There was December and January.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unfinished business. We don't have any unfinished business. New business. Let's go on to the Marine City Garden Club. Sent us a little request for a waterer. Let me get there. Mike, what did we say? How much was it for the, to water? Wasn't it like $3,600 a year?
$3,600.
Yeah.
Nice little summer job.
Yeah. Right. So I just need a motion to approve this request from the garden club for a waterer, for the plants, for $3,600 for the season.
Wouldn't we just handle that at the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't.
Do you need to make a motion to approve that it go into the budget or?
It's already in your budget.
Already in it?
It's already in our budget. This is more of a, I mean, we can acknowledge to the garden club that this has already been approved. They might like to know that it's been approved because our budget doesn't get approved for months more, months ahead.
Sure.
Just bring them peace of mind that it's done.
So why don't we make a motion to receive and file this and notify the garden club that it has been included in the forthcoming budget?
Support.
All right. Any other discussion?
The watering of it, are they still going to get the water from the building there? Or is it going to be?
We don't use water from the building. We use our Gator, the City Women's Club, use that water from the building.
They water all their flowers with, and they got the hoses wound up there.
Anyone else? I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vicammon.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Code of Ethics. We just have a draft, preliminary draft in Holly. You want to go ahead and explain this?
Sure. So this is just that. It's a preliminary draft that was asked of me when I first started here to get something in place. It will eventually tie in also to the updated HR policies and procedures, which is, we're still working on. But again, this is just a draft. It's a concept from another, a few actual municipalities. There's no sense in reinventing the wheel, and we're working through it. I still need to sit down with Bob and make some tweaks to it, but we also wanted to make sure that we put it out to all of you. If you have comments, suggestions, please feel free to either email myself or Bob on them, and we will take those into consideration as we're trying to finalize and bring you a final draft to vote on, so.
Yeah. Because I think that, you know, this is just the first.
Right.
The first of many discussions on this, so.
It's just taken a while to get this far with everything on the table, and it's not an easy thing to necessarily put together either, so, to make it work for your community.
Yeah. And we, and we had said that we were going to put together an ethics, Code of Ethics and a Code of Conduct, and so this is our start, right? The start of it all.
Yeah.
So like you said, if you have any questions, email Holly, email our city attorney, and that's it, right?
Yeah.
All right. Going down to the Code of Conduct, same thing.
Wait, wait, wait.
Good question.
Just a comment here. Since, since these are all drafts, can you put the draft watermark on these?
Oh, yeah. Sure. Sorry.
So that.
Nobody thinks they're final.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
We're not doing anything with this right now, but can we comment on?
Can you what?
Comment.
Of course.
I'm sorry I added some.
Yeah. If you, if there's something that you read in here already.
Well, I think we hire a city manager to run the city government, and I looked at the section here on the, and I know why we're giving all, everything away to the power for the mayor. Mayor has the same power as everybody else on the board. So, I think this has to be revised and looked at closely. Thank you.
Would it be beneficial that we have a committee for this?
If you want.
We could, but I, that could take a very long time. It might be more beneficial to do, you know, comments and, I mean, it's a pretty.
Why don't we, why don't we see where we end up at the next draft? So independently, send me your thoughts, because, you know, these are some things you may want to just send to me and have me take a look at how they mesh in without, you know, without creating a committee at this point. It goes for both of them. These are very rough drafts that, you know, we're going to, we're going to work on, but I think the point was really to let the commission know that, you know, we hadn't forgotten that this was a thing that you all want to have in place, and you want it to be downright right when it is approved. And there are some issues. Phil, you raised some good points I wrote down, and Bill, I understand your, your comment. And we also have to balance this yet against the charter, and then, you know, the charter's in flux, so we got to watch what we're doing there because we might be changing the charter. And we want to balance this against our policies and procedures, but we haven't written those yet, so we got to make sure, you know, that we don't run afoul of what could be in those policies and procedures. So, and the other thing we don't want to do is create duplicative layers of, of direction. We just want to, you know, if any, if anybody wants anything from government these days, it's one voice, one clear message. So we want to get this right, but we want to show you that it's been started.
Okay. So the plan is that we take whatever comments and concerns and we send it to you guys?
As general as they might be, send them to me directly.
Okay.
Or as specific as they might be, if it's a typo, send it to me directly.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll get on it.
All right. Good. All right.
Just to clarify on the Code of Ethics, I saw it all when you guys saw it, so don't think that the mayor is, you know, changing anything or doing anything. This was all stuff that.
No. We didn't consult with you at all.
No. I was not consulted, so get that idea out of your head. So we're moving on to the Code of Conduct?
Same, same explanation.
Right. Okay.
First draft.
First draft. Let's go down to the new business D. So the electronic mail management and retention policy. This is, again, it's another draft. Holly?
This was worked on with mostly, I believe, Chris and Bob. So I'm actually going to let you speak to this.
Yeah. This one is a little further along. I, I heard what, what Bill had to say. This is a policy that is somewhat driven by the state policy. So if you, if you want to log on to the state's retention policy, you'll see what, what Phil actually said is accurate. There's line items for, here's, here's retention for your clerk, here's retention for your, and, and obviously, the onslaught of email communications has not wreaked havoc, but has changed retention policies across the state of Michigan. the onslaught of email communications has not wreaked havoc, but has changed retention policies across the state of Michigan. So we're trying to incorporate the email policy directives that the state is using, which does allow for some discretion in what is considered to be transitory emails that can leave your system because they're simply transitory. If you're simply, Brian attached is X, that email is certainly transitory and doesn't have to be retained under, under most of the, the retention policies. So, one of the things that people do is they simply adopt the state retention policy. And that's not a bad way to go, because then it, whenever they change it, yours changes, whatever they're doing, you're doing, and you're not expanding or detracting at all from the state policy. So we tried to do that to the most extent possible here. But again, on this one, comments are, are welcome, and this one's probably a little further along than the other two.
I did read that, shouldn't we have a resolution for this through the MML? I, I looked at some of the stuff the MML had, and they're basically saying we should kinda do this through resolution, even if we draft, even if we accept the state's policy.
Yeah, and we will.
Resolution?
We would not be doing that this evening.
Okay.
Because we are not adopting it this evening.
Okay. So when we get to that, and again, this one should say draft, and then when we get to that point, then we'll have a resolution to go with it.
Yes.
All right.
And think about, when you're going through this one, give it some practical thought, because you're, you're the folks who, you know, email and other communications, and give it some practical thought, so that we're not doing anything that is overly burdened, but yet we're respecting the rights of the public through the Freedom of Information Act to have access to what they deserve to have access to. And I don't wanna create any policy that restricts the public's rights to see what they're entitled to see. That would be the balance.
And don't we have like, but we have to also be mindful of storage capacity?
Correct, correct.
We can't keep everything.
Yeah.
Cuz it's gonna be very crowded.
I'll tell ya, a good way to handle this is don't send any emails.
Pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it is-
We did reach out to High Tech after some of the other questions about it, and, I mean, they were very blunt with us. They went back and talked to their engineers about other opportunities and what other municipalities had done too. And his exact comment was, there is no easy answer for this.
There isn't.
There's just not. It is, you go out and you buy extra storage, plain and simple.
And we've talked before about, you know, not, us not getting into quorum conversations on email as, as being violative of, of the Meetings Act, and, and us, you know, really limiting the substantive communications by email. And so, so you guys are well-versed on that, and, you know, I know, I know a lot of you, you know, might communicate with each other on private emails, and that's okay. But, you know, you may, it may give you, when you're done reading this and you understand what we have to go through here, it, it may give you more caution before you, you know, keep emailing, if that makes any sense. Because when we get a FOIA request, so, let's say we get a FOIA request, and the requester wants all emails to and from, and included this and that, from this date to this date, to and from, Brian Ross and, and the city manager. I mean, we, we have to go and really get an expert to come in, and then they plug in those dates, and they, you know, retrieve those emails. And, you know, it's, it's, it's quite a job, but on the other hand, the public has a right to that information, so.
Yeah, I know I have a problem with the, the building department and several units, and get it through them that the retention in the building department is until the house is gone, you have a file on it. And I'll tell ya, I got a request in today in one of the units, and they, they wanna go back so, so far.
Yeah.
It was like, I said, well, we'll go ahead and send them an estimated cost and see if they still want it.
Yeah, it's, it can be, it can be a daunting task when we, when we have to bring in, you know, experts to, to box in these emails. So use, you know, use your emails as necessary, but, you know, use them in the manner that you have been sparingly and cautiously, and, and directly, so that you're, you know, communicating only when you need to and not just haphazardly.
Right, and as much as the public has a right to know, the public also has a right to know how much of their taxpayer dollars are being spent on, like you said-
These taxes.
Yep, that's, that's all in your taxes, so you are, everybody is footing the bill for this.
You have to remember, when you, when we get a request, we have five business days to turn it around. We, you know, for extraordinary requests, we can seek a 10-day extension under law. But I mean, five days in this community goes fast.
Yeah.
Especially when it's snowing.
Yeah, fifteen days, you got a lot of paperwork to-
Right, right, I have a community right now where there's a, a person disgruntled in a, in a different community over the MERS retirement system because some personal matters. So we're getting an email every morning at 8:05 asking for something different about MERS. And it's, it's, it's just been, it has literally stopped the clerk's office for the last month. But they're legitimate requests.
Anyone else? All right, let's go on to the MERS update.
All right, so the MERS update, this is really just kind of a cleaning house type of thing. So when I started, I was trying to get my name on all of the different accounts and get into everything. When I got into the MERS system, I noticed that it was really kind of messed up as far as we had too many accounts that we didn't actually even have people in, and this goes back years and years and years and years. And no idea why we have accounts with, that no, don't have people in it or anything, but we did. Language was similar in your Teamsters, your POAMs, everything was set up the same. We just had multiple accounts for the programs, and it might've just been, it could be a clerical error on MERS part, don't know. But we also, I also found out that during this process, there had been a promise to the non-union staff members that they could have this MERS HSA as well, but it had never been set up. So the money was coming out of people's paychecks and just hanging out in thin air was never actually being invested. So we get, went in and I worked with the MERS representative and got the non-union staff set up with the MERS program using the identical language that POAM and Teamsters had, cuz it was all the same clauses, all matches up with our, our HR policies and what they get and what we match and everything. So this is a consolidation, simply fixing some of the outlying questions where the intent was correct, but there might've been a slight language difference. We deleted two accounts, which were, there was nobody in them, these were the identical accounts with no bodies in them. We consolidated some of the provisions, clarifying the details on specifically vesting and sick leave. It matches what's in our personnel policies, so the employees aren't losing out on anything. MERS just didn't have, they're pooping a pile on their ends, basically. And then we, again, yes, just clarified the vesting and the salary match, which is the 1,500. And that's really what this does, but they want, because it is a MERS retirement, they want the commission to vote on this, and they want the meeting minutes to show that this is done before they'll process this. So it's just a cleaning house, to be honest with you.
And just so everybody knows, that the MERS stands for the Municipal Employees Retirement System.
Yes.
I know, sometimes acronyms, right?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. So alls we need is a motion to just approve this update, right?
Yeah, roll call vote on a motion.
Participant agreement.
I'll make a motion, will you approve the MERS Healthcare Savings Program participant agreement?
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion, questions for Holly? Okay, all in favor?
No.
Nope.
What?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vicammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have a resolution number 002-2022, the publicly funded health insurance contribution.
This is a resolution that you guys pass annually to opt out of the state's program. It's, it's a law that was put into place, PA 152. By opting out of it, you do not have to, it has to do with employee costs. And if you either opt out of it, or you have to do what the state tells you to do for your employee contributions with healthcare. So you guys choose to opt out of it every year and, and run your own program, which is the safe bet to do, because there's penalties if you choose to follow the state's rules and you don't follow it to a T, they can withhold money from you, from other things. So this is just a, again, this is a standard document you guys approve every year to opt out.
So we need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number 002-2022, the exemption from the requirements of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
Support.
We have a motion of support, anybody have any questions?
So roll call on this one.
Yep. Roll call.
Mayor Vicammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's talk about the low-service replacement pump at the water plant.
That's not, no.
Mike? Mr. Ittrich, our DPW superintendent?
What you're reading is, that's all I got, I mean, I can't get nobody else in there to quote it out, so. Let's get into those, things again, like the Belvedere Pump Station, you know, you got two people, Kennedy or Detroit Pump now.
Mike, just to, for everyone else, it, it is correct that to go to a different style pump, et cetera, it would require an Eagle permit and engineering-
It would require that, and also we would have to change your piping, or motorhead, everything else on top, so.
You have to update all your plans.
Yeah.
To change, you have to get a permit, it's a big, it's a big process. They wanna know everything that you're doing that's different, if you're doing it the same, you're okay. That's why everyone stays with the same vendors on these projects.
Is that pump going out quite a bit? Haven't you asked for a water pump in the last?
This is a low lift at the water plant, I mean, we've never replaced them.
What's the age of it, you know?
Twenty-two years.
Wow.
Oh, that's, that's a good run.
That is a great run.
That's a really good run.
Considering how they make things nowadays, yes.
Well, hopefully we get another twenty, you know, twenty-plus years on these other ones, you know, so that happens would be great.
So basically, he needs two motions.
So we need a motion to waive competitive bidding and then a motion to approve.
Yeah, and the basis on waiving competitive bidding is, is the lack of providers and the, and the benefit of the sole source.
I'll make a motion, we waive competitive bidding for the replacement of the low-service pump for Detroit Pump.
Support.
We have a motion of support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vicammon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now I need a motion to approve sixteen, sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a low-service pump at the water plant for the cost of, you need to, maybe do not exceed, or just-
That's, that's, that quote is-
Done and done, okay. For sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, that would be replacing the pump in lieu of rebuilding it. That's it.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vicammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there an opportunity for one more question? Sorry, can we save the pump for the purpose of rebuild later, or?
Thirteen thousand when you build it, sixteen thousand if you buy a new one.
I know, but I mean, do they take it away when you replace it, or?
Yeah, they take it away.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's sort of like-
No value.
Yeah. Pump plus core return.
Yeah. If it worked out that way, yeah, I'd love to have a spare sitting up there.
Sure, yeah. Well, in twenty-two years, yeah.
Thank you.
See you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike, be safe.
Thank you, Mike.
You too.
Go home and go to bed.
Got other things to do right now.
It's not snowing or anything.
Looks like it stopped snowing.
No, it's still-
No, oh, no, it's still going. All right, sorry, let's move on to eleven, which is our items removed from the consent agenda. So we're gonna be talking about seven C, which is the grant between the state of Michigan and Wayne Metro Community Action Agency. You wanna explain this a little bit?
Yes. We were approached about this program, which is essentially a program to help lower-income folks pay their utility billing. So the, we all know that there's grant money out there all over the place right now at the state and federal level. And basically, MDHHS partnered with the Wayne County Metropolitan Community Action Center, and they are running the payments through them. They're basically being the conduit out into the local communities to help people who are having a difficult time paying their water and sewer payments. So what we do is we advertise to the residents that this program's being offered here, and if they have a hard, they're hard up, having a difficult time, they reach out and they sign up through Wayne County's metro program. And then Wayne, the money will come funnel through Wayne County Metro to us to pay their bills. So we aren't out anything, we will be receiving the full payment for these folks' water-
It's a good program.
Yeah, so it really, it benefits the residents who are having a hard time right now, and the city gets their money. So Michelle was printing off all of the flyers, we'll be advertising for this in the next water bills online in every way we can get it out to the community so that they know that this assistance program is available.
So, so it is gonna go on everybody's water bill?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
My only question, cuz, yes, I think this is a great program. So on page three, it says there that under four A, number four, it says establish a dispute resolution process to resolve issues arising, so is there one, or do we have to do that?
Oh, under-
So if there's any disputes, it's a resolution process for any disputes, it's, it's item four, four A, number four.
Four, it's, there's two page three of elevens.
Oh.
Yeah.
The first page, well, hang on. The second page, second page three.
Three point five.
That's not us.
Oh, no.
What number was that, Lisa?
It's, it's-
It's four A four, but that doesn't, it's the utility, MDHHS and WMCAA have to do that, not us.
Okay, I just wanna make sure on that one, and let's see. And then on page four, next one, it says each party will finish. So I'm assuming it should be minimal for us to do any of the, whatever it takes to process it.
To pass.
We, all we do is really collect the money, because it'll either come from the resident or it comes through this funnel to us directly. Yeah, the only thing that we'd have, legwork we'd have to do is if for some reason they sent the wrong payment or we wanted out of it, we'd have to do a 30-day notice to get out.
Okay, all right, that's it, that's it, but I think it's a great program, and it's worth discussing so that everybody knows. I know it's already been on Facebook, so.
There's a giant packet, stack of flyers in the office getting ready to go out for everybody, so.
So we have to approve this now, since it was in the consent agenda?
We don't have to approve it, do we?
It was in the consent.
It was consent, it was an FYI.
Oh, we do.
Yep.
Okay.
Now you gotta vote on it.
Vote to adopt it or vote to receive and file it?
Vote to receive and file.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the memorandum for the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Support. Support.
We have a motion of support, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vicammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
City managers report.
Um, all right. What?
Snow.
I know, snow. So I am not gonna go through everything on here, you've all seen it, there's a lot going on, obviously. I think the three things I just wanna touch on real quick that are the big ones, I think the biggest that the community cares about too is there is a Bridge to Bay Trail group that's gonna start meeting again. I know it's weird cuz there's snow on the ground, but we're trying to get the ball rolling for the upcoming season and making sure the plans and everything are underway for that. So there'll be a big community countywide, I think, meeting happening, it's next week or the week after. So that's up and running again. The work groups for 300 and 303, Water Street and Broadway are, have taken place. We've done two, they've been, I think, very successful as far as residents, business owners, commissioners feeling like they have a voice at this work group. The forum has been very user-friendly for everybody. We hope that more people continue to come out and vocalize their feelings and thoughts on things, because I'm sure there's more options to have, but we're, we're starting to see repetitive conversations. So I don't know, I don't know where the group will go after this yet, but it's so far very successful, and we hope that more people do come out and partake in them, because it's for a good cause, it's for, it's a big deal. The, the two properties, it's, it's a big deal, so. But I'm happy that everybody's been participating as well as they have. And the biggest one is, of course, it's budget time, so that is underway. With the reconciliations through December, that's helped tie out some things in the budget that we needed to do. There's a few more steps with other journal entries that need to happen to make sure that our numbers are completely accurate to date, which UHY is catching up on, but I've already started my department head meetings to sit down and go through their budgets, work on truing up our numbers for the current fiscal and our recommended budget for the next fiscal, and a lot of work to do. And then I look forward to bringing to you guys the next steps, once we kinda have a document worth working on. So, those are the big ones.
Any questions for city manager Tatman?
Yep, got one. I see you got in here that you communicated and coordinated with the county on an agreement for the county to collect and handle the taxes. for the county to collect and handle the taxes. Is there an agreement, and what's the cost?
So, we're right there. We have nailed down a lot of the language for it, but the accountants for the county couldn't get us our numbers yet, they got a surprise audit last week. So, they ran behind on that. So, I plan on having that, and the county said they will have everything to me, it will be on Marches.
Okay.
So, yep.
Thank you, that's it.
Anything else? You have a lot.
I know.
This is a lot. That's good. All right, moving on to commissioner privilege. Commissioner Bryson?
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yeah, we had a fire department budget meeting, and normally, I'm not on there, but poor Chinatownship had a COVID crisis over there, so I ended up going to the meeting for one of them. But I want to point out some stuff here. These guys, this year, with all the calls, it was one of their highest ever, they had nine hundred and fifty-three calls.
Wow.
Throughout the year. It was, with COVID and everything, it was extremely busy. We're hoping that tones down, because that affects everybody's average on all the stuff going on. We did get a preliminary budget done, we're going to try to get it approved quick, we're going to get it to you with all the information. Some of the things, luckily, this year, we're not doing anything big, but they needed some Mustang suits, those are the ones that used to go in the water. They said that these ones are so old, our chief said that when the zippers are leaking in, a real bad spot for the guys, so they said it's not very pleasant. So, that's one thing. They're going to look for a Honda generator for one of their vehicles, some toolkits, battery scene lights, some gas detectors, rescue tarps, a tripod harness, which, the tripod harness is to lower people down into pits and that, which also is utilized by our DPW, probably they use it more than we do. And then, they have a tablet they can use for hotspots and some of the fires things, and we're also going to do the apparatus baylights, and they got to replace some fire hose. But even all that only comes to twenty-five thousand dollars, which has already been figured in for our normal stuff. So, they've done very, very well with all these communities, keeping their budgets under control, even when we've had to increase the cost for these firefighters to try to keep them. It's very, very difficult. So, it went really well, and so you'll have all that information shortly, and we'll have ours approved for you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Marine City Area Chamber of Commerce and the volunteers for pulling off a very successful Fire, Ice and Spice Festival. That was, what was it, two Saturdays ago, two weeks ago now?
We're still frozen, we've got to go.
Yeah, it was cold, it was really cold, but they pulled it off. It's nice to see everybody out there just having fun and with the fire pits. It was kind of like, it was just some small-town fun, so it was a huge success, so thank you and thanks to the volunteers. And other than that, just want everybody to be careful out there, because it's got nasty on as fast, so just be careful.
Thank you. Commissioner Klassen?
Yeah, the planning commission met. I think we had to wait a half hour to start the meeting, because some of the gentlemen that's on the board took the old time. And we were all leaving, and they were coming in, so, but we had enough for our quorum, and we discussed some things. We discussed, one thing is that we've been asking for, and they're working on, they're going to do that, is a map with the zoning, correct, all the zoning districts. And there was one part that the city manager is going to look into about the state law with trailer parks.
We did that today.
Okay. Because that's all up and down, and everybody, the big city, one of you, all, New Baltimore, tried to get rid of theirs and couldn't, so, give you a heads up. And the other thing I had is, we got some literature, what do you want to hand out here, from Phil, and I don't understand, I guess, is how to get on the agenda, for a resident to get on the agenda.
I don't, I've never seen a policy that you have. Many communities have policies where members of the public need to gain the support of two board members to put, you know, or there's some formula, I'm not saying that's the.
Do we have a policy?
I have not seen one.
So, if somebody, if we don't have a policy and somebody wants to get on, how do we, I mean, how do you refuse them?
I know for commissioners, if you want something on you, contact, and then normally gets on the agenda, but for the public, I don't, I've not seen a policy. I looked this week, obviously.
Yeah.
I looked, and I did not see a policy. But I do have them in other communities where, you know, somebody, you know, Rosalie could go to one of you and say, you know, I'd like to see this on the agenda, and then gain some support, and then it gets relayed, and then, you know.
Kind of what they've always done here is just told the person, if they submit it in writing to the city, and it's something that goes on there, it went on, that's the way it was always done for everybody. Not that we have a policy, but that's, that's always been the rule of thumb, if they submit it in writing and they request something to be on there, then with their information, then it usually was put on the agenda.
Well, if we're having a problem with it, then we look at a policy.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, I was able to attend the MML Elected Official Academy Core Course. It was the weekender, so it was Friday and Saturday. It was very good, very informative, and in fact, they record the sessions for you, too, so that you can go back later and view them again. I did email everybody about that and the availability of it, so hopefully, you got that. There will be another session in person, this was a virtual one, there'll be another session in person in April, and it's mid-state, sort of somewhere, I want to say Howell, but I'm not entirely sure. In that region, though. And then, same time next year, they'll have another virtual. So, they're going to do one in-person and one virtual annually. To further that, there's an advanced course that I plan on, hopefully, if it's approved, taking, and probably would do that around the same time next year. The virtual format was great, everybody, you know, it was nice to have the presentation in front of you. Anyway, exceedingly informative, and I think I can share the materials with you, but not the video and everything else, obviously. I attended the historical commission meeting, and the draft minutes of that were in our packet, but one thing in particular was, the historical commissions want to re-include the Heritage Square Park back in the master plan, so that may be for us at a future meeting. Everybody be safe out there, be careful of the snow, and that's all.
When you emailed us about that seminar, that's transitory.
Yes. Thank you. It's just info. It's making no call on a city decision or anything else.
Right, just so you know. All right. I am, I don't think that the public knows this, but our city attorney was contacted by one of our residents, Phil Alexalak, about a letter that I, or an email, actually, that I wrote three and a half months ago to police chief Heslop. And the issue has been completely resolved. So, Bob, can you enlighten me on some of the?
Well, I think that.
History?
I think that you guys have resolved that issue, and certainly, I have made it clear what the rules are with respect to members of this commission contacting directly, department heads, and we're, I think we're all clear on that. And I've independently talked to you, and I've independently talked to the police chief. I think the two of you are on the same page with respect to that issue, and, you know, we've talked about it at this level, so that's kind of what I advised the member of the public in an email.
And. I'm sorry.
Cold session?
Well, we've, we've talked about it outside.
Yes, we have. And then, city manager Tatman, as far as you know, this issue's been resolved.
Absolutely.
Through, and was Mr. Alexalak informed of that?
Yes.
That this issue was resolved?
Yes, on a couple of occasions by me.
A couple of occasions?
Yeah.
Okay. Chief Heslop, I'm sorry, I know you're here, and I just want to ask, as far as you know, the issue with my email to you, between me and you, because you and I've had a meeting, has it been resolved?
It's been discussed, I mean?
Yes. So, I just want everyone to know that there's, you know, no, nothing was done, you know, secretively or whatever, that it has been out in the open, you know? And the issue was resolved, and it was resolved, and said that it was resolved, like numerous times. And, you know, we, it's been three and a half months, you know? We all said, as a collective group, you know, numerous times, that we're, we're going to, like, get past this stuff, and we need to get past this stuff, you know? I mean, I'm looking at, you know, our city manager's report, we have a lot on our plate that we need to focus on as a group. So, I just want to make sure that, as far as you know, city manager, any more emails? Because I know he was emailing you a lot.
I think we're resolved.
Done.
Yeah, the issue is resolved.
Right.
We still get asked if it's been resolved, but it's been resolved.
Right. All right, okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. Anybody have anything else? All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Support?
Good motion.
All in favor?